Now, call to order the March tenth, two thousand twenty-five Franklin County Community School Corporation Regular School Board Meeting. And we'll start with, if everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. Ms. Wilson, if you could please start the pledge for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated.
Members of the board, I would ask that we, if willing, to make a slight change to our agenda for tonight, if you so see fit. I would like, if you're willing, so that will require a motion, a second discussion, and then a vote, to move item G, item G out of new business, which would be the presentation that I have of, I'm sorry, item F. Item F out of the new business, which is the presentation on master facility planning. I'd like to move that to just prior to statements from public employees. After the presentation, I would request that we pause any action on that. Let our, let those who signed up to speak, give them a chance to speak. And then after they speak, we can return that item with any action at all at that point. It's a little bit different than normal, but tonight's a little different than normal, so if that's possible, from there.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I motion to approve.
Ms. Holman, Ms. Wilson's second. All those in favor, say aye. Raise your right hand, sorry.
Is it item F or item D?
F.
So, item F. Item F is the presentation on master facility plan.
Item F, new business, F, master facility plan presentation.
Just to be clear, I would present before public statements, and then it would pause, let the public statements happen.
It's under new, new business.
Then you would choose to return.
It must have been changed, because I think she printed this off with another date, and it's been, mine's been was D, and now it's bumped back to F. So, there must have been something added to the agenda when she printed it.
Got you.
Right, so it's item F.
Are you okay with the move?
Yeah, I voted for it, yeah. No problem.
First up then is celebrations.
Yeah, thank you so much for the opportunity to talk about a couple of our incredible staff members here for the month of March. I'd like to bring up first and foremost, Ms. Barbie Tatman, if you'll join me right up here. Barbie, come on up. Superintendent Mr. Dustin Garing is excited to announce that Ms. Barbie Tatman, or as the kids call her, Ms. Barbie, has been selected as March's Support Staff of the Month. Barbie is a member of the cafeteria staff at Franklin County High School. Although Mrs. Tatman has only been at Franklin County Community Schools for one year, she has made an incredible impact on so many of our high school students. And I can contend to that. I saw that in action. Barbie was nominated for this honor by several staff and administrators. When asked why Mrs. Tatman would be considered for this recognition, they responded, Barbie is the heart of the school. She always has a smile on her face, and the kids absolutely love her. Students are always searching for her in the cafeteria so they can update her about their lives. We even have students asking where she is if she misses a day of work. She attends sporting events and volunteers for many activities just to support the kids. She is one of a kind, and I wish we had more like her. She is so deserving of this award. In her free time, Barbie loves spending time with family and friends, attending sporting events, reading, gardening, baking, and cooking. When asked what the best part of her job is, Ms. Tatman responded, the best part of my job is being with the students and the staff. I love each and every one of them. They bring so much joy to my day. They fill my heart with so much love, and their hugs are the best. My coworkers are the greatest. I look forward to seeing the students and staff every day and feel truly blessed that I can be a part of such a great family here at Franklin County High School. Just one question for you. Were able to get the whipped cream out? It took a little bit of time, am I right?
Yes.
All right. The purpose of Support Staff of the Month is to recognize outstanding FCCSC Support Staff who demonstrate dedication to their job. And of course, nomination forms are available for every month. Big giant round of applause, Ms. Barbie Tatman.
Forgive me for not standing.
Oh, no, you're fine. You're fine.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbie. Indeed, congratulations. Great honor.
All right, Ms. Barbie, come back to me just for one more moment, okay? This is gonna be for you, okay, along with the cup, which I'll hold just for another second. Tell us who's with you tonight.
I have my son Joe and his girlfriend, Kristen.
Well, thank you so much for letting us borrow her every single day. We're so thankful for you. One more time for Ms. Barbie. All right. Next up, I'd like to welcome up Ms. Bobby Prinsell. So, this will be for you when it's all said and done, okay, as well as the cup underneath. All right, congratulations. Here we go. Superintendent Mr. Dustin Garing is honored to announce that Ms. Bobby Prinsell has been selected as March Educator of the Month. Ms. Prinsell is a second grade teacher at Brookville Elementary School. Bobby has been educating FCCSC students for twenty-eight years, but has taught everything from preschool to high school, hearing impaired and hearing impaired, in her thirty-seven years in education. In addition to her role at BES, Bobby is involved with the Alzheimer's Association and has previously coached girls on the run for eight seasons. Mrs. Prinsell has her bachelor's degree from the University of Kentucky and master's degree from Indiana Wesleyan. Bobby was nominated for this honor by a parent. When asked why Ms. Prinsell should be considered for this recognition, she responded, my daughter talks nonstop about how nice she is. She absolutely loves the fact that she gets to see Ms. Prinsell every day. My daughter has said that anytime she asks a question, Ms. Prinsell always is so helpful. Bobby provides the greatest communication with me as a parent. She was so informative at the beginning of the year at parent-teacher conferences. My daughter has also expressed that Ms. Prinsell makes sure that she helps everyone in the classroom. In her free time, Bobby enjoys gardening, cooking, traveling, reading, and spending time with her friends and family. When asked what she loves most about her job, Ms. Prinsell responded, the best part of my job is simple. It's the students. The second grade classroom is a special place to be each and every day. One of my favorite parts of teaching second graders is seeing how much growth happens in just one year. At this age, students are becoming more independent, curious for knowledge, and confident in their abilities. Their reading skills take off, and they start making deeper connection with, between ideas. I love building relationships with my students. I love getting to know their personalities and watching them grow, watching them gain confidence, and seeing those aha moments. When something clicked, it's incredibly rewarding. Plus, their sense of humor at this age is fantastic. I like to think that my students know when they walk through my classroom door, we will laugh a lot, and they will be, and they will be loved a lot. It's also rewarding when former students come back either the next year or twenty years later and share with me their moments from when I was their teacher. And I will say, having been in her classroom a number of times, it is a place full of love. Those kids love her incredibly, and honestly, it's a reflection of her love for them. One more time, Ms. Bobby Prinsell.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Great job, Barbie.
I want to come on back to Bean. Barbie, tell us who you have with you today.
Just my husband, Eric, and a lot of coworkers.
Absolutely. The crew is here. And I heard they were here for you. I heard that was, I heard that was true. Thanks for letting us borrow her every single day. She's an absolute guest. One more time, Ms. Bobby Prinsell. All right, we're gonna pause for just a second. As we always do, we'll go ahead and take our pictures. So, we can have our Staff of the Month come on up. We're gonna take a picture right here at the Wildcat. And then we'll have, the first picture will be for the nominees, and then of course, their families as well. Come on up. You start first at the Wildcat. Okay, family members, join. Yeah, there's, I think there's. I heard her say it clearly.
And all my family this week.
That's the best.
Yeah.
Never bore it, I would imagine. Never bore it. All right.
No, he died.
You're welcome to stay in force as always.
In fact, I had his funeral at Talawan High School, and the place was packed.
Okay, next on the agenda is the consent agenda items. Where are your minutes, expenditures, and resignations? We're looking for a motion, second, and any discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Motion by Ms. Brennan, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Wilson, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven oh. Personnel new hires.
All right, under personnel new hires, we have the following joining us here at FCCSC. Rebecca Smith, paraprofessional at BES, James Stoke, paraprofessional at FCMS. Jerry Gilkey, paraprofessional at MFCMS. Alessandra Mayadis, cafeteria at FCHS. That requires motion, second, and action.
We have a motion.
I move that we, um, I move that we hire these people.
Motion to approve the new hires. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We'll take that.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven oh. Extra curricular.
All right, for extra curricular, we have Season Martin, fifth grade cheer coach, MCS. Jada Martin, volunteer fifth grade cheer coach, MCS. Brandon Cowan, cheer block sponsor, FCHS. Tanya Wertz, cheer block sponsor, FCHS.
Now, is this, they've already done this? Is that why we're, or is this for next year?
This will be for the future.
Okay.
Looking for a motion, second, discussion?
I'll still move.
Mr. Simonsen, first. Ms. Wilson, second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven oh. Grants and donations.
Thank you. All right, Chad Guttar, achievement school teacher, FCHS, is requesting permission to accept a grant in the amount of one thousand dollars from the Joe Burrow Foundation to increase awareness in youth mental health. Dustin Riley, athletic director, FCHS, is requesting permission to approve the following. A grant in the amount of one thousand three hundred and thirty dollars from the Franklin County Community Foundation. Carl and Jory Hindley, family memorial athletic endowment for the baseball program and girls' sports program. Also, a grant in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents from the Franklin County Community Foundation. Joyce A. Born Memorial Endowment for the Girls' High School Basketball and Girls' Youth Basketball. In addition to that, Shannon New, Assistant Superintendent, is recommending the approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five early literacy achievement grant distribution.
Looking for a motion, second, and any discussion?
I'll move.
Mr. Simonsen, second. Ms. Foster, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven oh.
Thank you to all of those.
Ms. Kendra, financial reports?
The corporation financial report, the education fund balance as of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, was seven million, five thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-six cents. A year ago, this balance was five million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and eight cents. The operations fund balance as of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, was a negative three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. A year ago, this balance was four million, twelve thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-three cents. I'd just like to note on that one, that was due to our geo bond that was reseeded into the operations fund. So, the difference was about three point two million of the geo bond. So, our, our actual number for the operations fund balance was about eight hundred thousand last year, outside of the geo bond reimbursement. The rainy day fund balance as of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, was four million, three hundred and three thousand, four hundred dollars and ninety-two cents. A year ago, this balance was one million, sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-four cents. The investment interest earned year-to-date as of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, was seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-one cents. This is compared to one hundred and three thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents a year ago, a year ago.
This is for discussion only. Any questions?
The cafeteria fund balance as of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, was two hundred and thirty-nine, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-five cents. This is compared to six hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and one cent a year ago. And the latchkey fund balance as of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, was eighteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. This is compared to fifteen thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars and six cents a year ago.
Again, discussion only. Any questions? If not, we are going to move to the amended item for the presentation over here. If anybody over here wants to get up and move over here for the presentation, we'll.
Yeah, you are more than welcome. I'm gonna be presenting right here, and the words get kinda small, to be honest with you. So, you are, there's all these seats, so you're welcome to any of them. Come on over, make your moves. I'll wait for you. That's it? Everybody else, I'll just say it right here. All right, so tonight, we're gonna take a few minutes to talk about master facility planning. And then after I'm finished presenting, at the end, there is a recommendation.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I apologize.
No worries.
I still didn't understand the sequence of things. I thought we were going to the public this time, but now we're going to the master plan. At this time, I would like to make a motion to table this, and the reason being is that I wasn't made aware of this till last Wednesday.
What are you wanting to table?
Well, why would we go into the presentation if we wouldn't consider tabling it first?
Well.
Okay.
We haven't even seen the presentation. There's no motion on the floor to be tabled.
If you're telling me not to ask for tabling it till we vote, then I'll honor that.
I'm not asking you to wait to table it till we vote. I'm asking you to watch the presentation and then see if there's even a motion to table.
I'm, I've already seen the presentation, okay, and I'm asking to table it, all right?
And this is to put it out there in the public, but we will entertain a motion to table.
Thank you.
This is very second.
I'm not finished yet, thank you.
If you make a motion to table, there's no discussion. It's a motion to table.
I can't offer why I'm tabling it?
By all means.
Okay, I'm tabling it because I didn't receive the information till last Wednesday. In fact, there was a number of us, even though we had discussed it in executive session, and obviously, I won't get into that. I also, my second reason for asking to table it is that I had recommended to have, to have the public have a chance to have a public meeting and ask questions about the master plan in general, okay? So, those are the two reasons that I'm asking to table the master plan, the master facility plan presentation tonight.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor of tabling the presentation, raise your right hand. All those opposed, five two. Mr. Simonsen and Ms. Foster in opposition.
Okay, so, we're gonna go through a master facility presentation tonight, and at the end, there is a recommendation, and it's just my recommendation as a superintendent. One of the things about this conversation is, of course, what does Dustin think? And at the end of the day, it comes down to board action and, or inaction, it's up to them. And so, just so we have our same rhythm of events here today. So, today, I'm gonna present, I'm gonna give a recommendation, we're gonna pause everything. This is what I asked for at the beginning, where we have a couple of community members who've asked to speak, they'll have that chance to do so. And then after that, we return to the item, which is a little bit different than normal, around any action or no action at all. But that'll be the rhythm of events as we go through the next few minutes. It's gonna be a few minutes of conversation as I talk to you a little bit about these slides along the way. So, it helps me to kinda solidify a little bit, like where have we been? What, what, what has been going on? And some of this is personal for me. So, from the moment I walked onto this campus in June, and before I even got approved in July, conversations were already happening around master facility. Literally, it was, I landed day one, I met with the former soup, she was wonderful to work with. They said, hey, listen, you need to hire an assistant soup today. Oh, okay. And we obviously took the time to do that just right and choose the right one. But then the second conversation immediately was, we need to start moving around master facility. And I said, listen, I haven't even seen all five buildings yet, let alone, I'm gonna start talking about which ones are gonna open and close. So, I needed to pause, and so I did. And so, I took the time to walk through, be a part of, really walk the journey up until the November elections, to kinda figure out what, what this is all about, where we are. But throughout the entire journey, it was a continual conversation from every angle known to man. We have to make a decision, we have to make a decision, and we have to move, we have to move, very much a sense of urgency. So, as that became a sense of urgency, as I landed at the fair, literally in July, I began to have conversation as people were asking me at the fair, hey, what are you gonna do about? And I even got a chance to meet one of our senators, there actually two, to have a little bit of a dialogue around what is this thing that everyone keeps talking about, as I was learning more. From then until now, that's been the conversation, concerns. And so, what are the concerns? Concerns around enrollment. I've been very vocal around concerns around enrollment and getting to that October date, and what did that mean, and where do we go from here? In terms of enrollment, I started chasing down what are facts and what are myths around House Bill two-seventy. I got concerned around, about the state of our elementary schools. Don't you know how bad it is? Or, oh my gosh, can we? And so, conversations were happening, concerns around the state of our three elementary schools. Concerns around finances, okay? Where are we now? Where have we been? What's the future look like? What are we gonna do about it? And by the way, the state's about to make some big, big decisions. This is coming back all the way from early November. Also, concerns around decisions that need to be made so that our community understands the vision. I heard clear that our community was seeking a vision. Where are we going? What is happening? And we have been paused for just about five years of time, waiting for a decision to get moving. We're just stuck. And I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just telling you the concerns that were brought to me and where we were as I approached this conversation. All of those are critical. All of those are important. It's easy to shy away from this one, but then you gotta start thinking about, families are making decisions for their lives and their children based on a plan that they didn't yet know? And so, that's tough. I've had five children go to kindergarten and go through elementary school, one still in. And so, like to think like, where am I going to take my child, and what does that look like for the future? Knowing that there was a pending decision is weighty on our families. And so, these are all very much on the mind. Soon after November, once we had our elections established and got through that, and I got a sense of settle, like where am I, and what is this place, and how do I do it? I began to really dig deeper into the issues that were noted before. I promised myself that I would not jump to every rumor, but rather go find out. I promised myself that I would not jump to every rumor, but rather go find out for myself. That I'm not gonna just say, well, that's what we've always said, therefore it must be true. I began to ask tough questions. I began to research, dig a little deeper. One of the things I wanted to figure out was our current realities. What are our current realities? What, what are these things? And what does it look like for the future? In December, as a team, we began to meet and discuss consolidation. You saw the notices come through, as well as any other options and all of the risks and rewards for every single option. Every option that we looked at was pursued, researched, vetted, and then we talked about risk and reward. Because all of them had risk and reward. And here's the thing, all of them, to some, would be good for our kids. None of the options were not good for kids. So we had to start deciding, well, what in our current reality does it mean to take a decision that is best for kids? And even in that conversation, there's probably a number of arguments that could be made any way it goes. But that was what we were facing. My team, my central office team, okay, and the board, started to work to narrow down those options. We can't just sit at five all the time or ten or whatever. We started to narrow down about what's feasible, what's not feasible, what's the reality, what's not reality, what is even like in, in contention, what does this look like? And we felt like it was important, despite some state level financial questions, which I'm gonna refer to again later on. Despite that, we felt like it was important to provide transparency to our community about where are we now? Where are we now? What is the plan? And do we wanna say out loud what the plan is for the foreseeable future? And so we know that kindergarten registration's coming, and families are making decisions. And I think this place is incredible. I've noted that many times. Poor Zach sat at the podium as I went off on a tangent a couple of weeks ago for about thirty minutes about how wonderful this place is. But we also have community members out there that are questioning, okay, that's great, but, but what does the future look like? And so we have a round of kindergarten registrations happening now. And so we wanted to get in front of that to some degree to say, hey, what's happening? And when I say we, I'm talking about members of my team and then also members of the board. To say, we wanna see what we can get out there so people know what we're looking for. Because up until this season, there hadn't been a lot of traction with decisions around family or facility planning. There wasn't a lot of traction. There was a lot of rumor and a lot of, a lot of angles that people talked through about this way or that way, or what they think should happen or shouldn't happen, or what's gonna happen tomorrow. But it was all a lot of speculation. We were making traction on, on this process. And so, we wanted to provide transparency to our community about where we are, the options, and where are we going from here? And that's what tonight is. I was asked to give a presentation around those things. I felt it was important that I give my recommendation, because it's one thing to just stand up here and talk and then be like, your call. But it's also important that they hear from me as a superintendent about what I think will be best. That doesn't mean it's what you think. I'm giving my recommendation, and we'll see what happens. It doesn't even, it has to reflect what they think. They get to make that final decision, but I chose to give this presentation because asked, and then secondly, I also give a recommendation. I hope that doesn't make us enemies. Because I think everybody comes at it from the same place. They want what's best for our kids. I hope that when you view this presentation, that you don't for one second think that that's not where my heart is. If that's the case, we need to spend more time together. That's not the truth. But I do have a lot of details in the weeds that led to my decision, my recommendation. And, and so I'm gonna give it to you tonight. Also, our current situation. You've heard of debt cliff and what's happening, so I'm gonna give you a little bit inside track as to what debt cliff looks like. This corporation, prior to me getting here, did an incredible job of lining up those bond dollars, those debt dollars, to all be paid off at just about the same time. Given an opportunity for a large scale project that then could be paid off over time. So all those things came together at the same time. In addition to that, we came back to the, the, the board and said, we'd like to pursue a geo bond, okay, which is a short-term bond, to line up even that, to keep the tax rate the same, not increase taxes at all, but keep it the same, and have it line up with the debt cliff as well. And so we had made those processes. Kendra Franks led us through that process through her organization, and, and we were able to achieve that. And so everything's lining up to the same spot, a, a significant debt cliff that will have availability. If we don't leverage the debt cliff, our tax rate drops. And I am, there's no question in my mind that our, our community members might be saying that, thank goodness, that's exactly what we're seeking. But here's the thing, if the school portion of the tax rate drops, other people can fill in that space very quickly, and it's gonna feel the same. So we have an opportunity to keep our tax rate the same and move forward with the dollar staying here. I have no problem with all the other public entities, they're wonderful too, but I would rather, my focus is here, that's my job. And so the debt cliff is coming, is to maintain our tax rate. If we don't make some level of move, our tax rate will drop, someone else will fill it in. And then later on down the road, when we change our mind, we're gonna be chasing those tax dollars through a tax increase, which no one likes that, and typically doesn't work. And so we have all this kinda coming together all at once. You might ask yourself, well, what is our debt capacity? Right? How much can we take on? What's this look like? What does it mean to have a large debt cliff? Two months ago, I would have told anyone who asked, first I'd ask Kendra again, make sure I got it right, and then I would ask, I would say, we have about a forty-five million dollar debt cliff pending, ready for us. Meaning that the board has choices about projects. In fact, as we went to executive session, not that I can give a lot of deals because that's illegal, but I would tell you that we talked at length about this as our debt cliff and all the options that were in front of us, or lack thereof, with that debt cliff, without raising taxes. We have a problem though. Here's a problem that we have, and this is not about political party, it's about reality. We are still waiting for a budget from the state around caps. Those caps change significantly our debt capacity. So I'm telling you, without absolute fact, it is not gonna be forty-five million unless any pending legislation doesn't become legislation. So our financial advisors, who are an incredible team and typically know all the answers, actually said, we're not sure. And I think that's unprecedented words for them, as they typically say, we have a really good idea because they got the inside track on a lot of things. But they said, we're not really sure what your debt capacity is, but we don't think it's gonna be above that, it's probably gonna be below that. So as I take the next slide on, I need you to remember that number. That is, two months ago, no tax increase. The question marks are what actually i- it is, no tax increase, because I just can't tell you that just yet. Fair? I'm a talker. Two-seventy is, is, is a bad word that I learned in coming here. Truth, it took me a little while to figure out what it was, and at the fair, I approached our senator about why he wrote it. And I asked him all the questions, because I was brand new and I didn't know, he didn't know me, I was just gonna, why, why is this happening? His words to me the next day when we talked was, it actually wasn't really written for your corporation, it was written for other corporations, but we don't understand why you're worried about it. But listen, you're gonna be fine, essentially. We had a longer conversation than that. I said, okay buddy, because my trust of politicians, no offense, is very minimal. I'm teasing, of course, sorta. But, of, of course. I then began to chase other realities of this. So let me pause and make sure we walk through two-seventy together. Two-seventy says that if you lose more than a certain percentage of your total population as a corporation compared to the highest of the previous five years, you then go to, to side number two. If you don't lose more than that, side number two doesn't matter to you, because you're good. Our number this year was nineteen hundred. In October, we landed at nineteen eighteen. Is that right?
Eleven.
Nineteen eleven, thank you. Squeaked it by, right? Little fist pumping was happening in my office, I was, I was very excited, because I didn't wanna have to take on that big lift. But I also didn't wait for that. I was already chasing answers to the question, waiting for October. And just so we're clear, if you hit that number, part B and below is, do you have multiple buildings serving the same population? Are any of them under capacity? And then the next weird piece of language, this is so strange to me, someone actually wrote this down. If you're within a twenty-minute drive of the new school. Now that's pretty subjective, because the way I drive is very different than the way some other folks drive. And it doesn't specify what that drive is. So I started to chase that. I said, if we hit this mark, if we're at eighteen ninety-nine, what does that mean? So I started talking to our lawyers. Hey, do I have anything to worry about? What do you think? And she made very clear, you have an absolute case. We will absolutely be fine. I'm telling you, we will be okay. Because it's a, because here's the reality, I got one school within eighteen minutes of the next school, and the other school's at twenty-two. That's, that's what we got. It depends on who's driving. And so, even as I approached October, I felt pretty confident that we weren't going to be slammed by two-seventy. Although I'm gonna be clear with you, as a corporation, this has been the haunting language for us well before I ever got here. Uh, don't you see it? Here it comes, it's gonna force you, et cetera. So I, I chased it, and our lawyer said, no, you should be good. The senator in Rhodes said it wasn't aimed for you, and we made the mark, right? But next year, I don't know, but I've already prepared the way. Legislation could change. They could hear this presentation and go, you know, you're right. That my, that, that drive time language is pretty dumb. Let me make up the next one. I, that, all those things can happen, but I can only go on what I have now. That's all I got, what I have now, and that's what I have now. And our other current situation, as I've said a number of times, is our community wants to know the plan. What is the plan? Our staff deserve to know it, our kids deserve to know it, our community deserves to know it. And as a superintendent, truth, I deserve to know it. Because I'm gonna go chase that plan, and I'm gonna do it well. I'm gonna make sure it's done well. No matter what the plan is, I do have a recommendation, but it, that doesn't mean it's my only option. I will do whatever it is, and I will do it well, but for me to go do it, right, gotta have a plan. So here's the research that I, that I went through. I went to Fannie and Howie and said, hey, I need some numbers on some ideas. What, what would it take? These are baseline ideas. This is not final numbers, not even close, they were so clear with that, they said it like eight times. Clear as day, these are not final numbers, they would likely go up from there, but it gives you a concept. Is that fair? Can we be fair enough to say this is a concept only? This is not the invoice. So I said, okay, here's some ideas that we were, I, I, I want you to, I know that our board's gonna talk about these things. So, we talked about three new right-sized elementaries on current sites. Three brand-new current sites. What's that gonna take? They came back with fifty-five point seven million dollars. Do you already see a problem? We have to see that problem, because I told you my pending debt capacity to keep the tax rate the same, which we know is going to lower. So right now at fifty-five point seven, what's it gonna take to get that done? Taxes have to go up. Choice number two, kind of an out-there idea, but why not? Let's chase it. Two elementary schools on neutral sites. So go buy land, split the difference, build schools there. I know, kinda out there, but why not chase it? So I did. They came back with sixty-one point four million, and they said there's a ton of movement there, because we don't know what land that looks like, but just the same, they gave me the numbers. Number three. One campus, New Brookville with eight hundred and fifty kids. What would that cost? Forty-six point four. So for us to house Brookville in a new building, all our K-five buildings, all those kids coming together, it would cost forty-six point four million as a base number. Well, we had a problem. Right? None of those numbers, even at that time, matched our debt capacity. And our debt capacity would lock us up for twenty years, if not more. So we had a problem. So we started to talk about, well, what else is possible? Let's talk about all these ideas, and so we kept talking about ideas. One idea that I started to chase was an idea around taking our existing Brookville Elementary as it stands now and renovating it so that it could hold eight hundred and fifty kids. I have to be honest with you when I tell you, it cannot currently hold eight hundred and fifty kids. It cannot. It cannot have school every day for eight hundred and fifty kids in our current situation. I have many reasons why. One very significant reason why is we couldn't feed them. Our kitchen at Brookville is too small to be able to produce the amount of food in the time that you're given to be able to feed those kids breakfast and lunch, let alone just lunch. So, I asked them, what would it take to renovate that building to do that? I also needed six classrooms. I needed six more classrooms added to Brookville for this to be possible. Those renovations came back at thirty-three point six million. That is making the other classrooms a little fancier, furniture paint freshening up, gutting the center, redoing it for a bigger kitchen and a bi- a bigger space. And then on the end caps towards the staff parking lot, adding two classrooms per, per wing. That's what that number is. That's not redoing all electricity, doing all plumbing, nothing like that, right? We're still gonna have old bones, right? But that's what that looked like. So those are the numbers that we had. We begin to then talk about, okay, geez, that's not wonderful news, it's hard. And remember, we are where we are. This is not five years ago construction costs, or ten years ago construction costs, this is our current construction costs. So, we began to talk about what is viable? What are our, are, are our elementary schools viable for the next decade? Not because we wanna kick the can down the road, but can we get more life out of our, out of our buildings? Is it possible by doing some stuff to get more life out of our buildings? Or are we so far gone that it's not possible to have school there for a decade without incredible renovation? So I went back to those who did these assessments, I'm gonna talk to you in a second, and asked them that exact question. The number that we talked about lands here. Now that number is extremely loose, because we have to then decide which of these things are we going to do or not do. That's not survival money, that is choice on upgrade money, and we have some choices in there. And friends, I can't be more transparent with you than this. I'm telling you, everything, the inside track, probably more than you've ever heard in your life, but here we go. We're gonna keep going, because we're not quite done yet, and so we had those choices. So I went back to the assessments, and I said, what is possible for these schools? And so, is speaking with the person who did the assessment in twenty twenty-four, I asked him a very direct question. I said, are our schools viable for another decade? Is that reality? He said, absolutely yes. Yes. There are things you can do to ensure it, but yes, it is very realistic that, that your buildings are viable for the next decade. So, okay, so let's start looking at that assessment, so we start piecing it all together. In addition to that, we have some other assessments coming that's gonna talk to us about our immediate needs, around things that what, what do we have to do versus what can we do, what should we do? And so those assessments are still in action now. In fact, we, some of you may have saw us coming around the other day, and I probably make you nervous every time I come around with a bunch of guys with a clipboard. But that's what we were doing. We were getting a sense of like, first wave, are our buildings viable? And then they're gonna come back and do more of that assessment, uh, not viable, I, I apologize. What does it take to take that next step? Future funding. I want you to hear me, and I'm not holding anything back from you. No holdback. We know that, that, uh, uh, legislation's still in flux. We know that's all the way through April. We know that's happening. We also know that it's very possible that we could come back with moderately bad news, incredibly terrible news, or catastrophic news. I don't anticipate a lot of really good news, but that's just from being an administrator for seventeen years and waiting for the funding to show up. They don't tend to give you more money. That's not a typical thing. It happens sometimes, but not as often as you think. It happens sometimes, but not as often as you think. And so we do stand with other public corporations. We're right with them. We're no different than anyone else around us in waiting for these numbers. Some of those numbers are about our education fund. Some of these numbers are really about property tax and the caps with a lot of question marks. With what caps are gonna put in place, then how does it impact us? I have to be clear with you and anyone who's listening. There are some numbers that you've seen on some of these websites that typically are clickbait to scare you. But if they come to fruition, it's catastrophic. And so we very well could be coming back to you in the fall and saying, listen, it is catastrophic news. It's so bad that there's not even a conversation about buildings. It's gonna be, what can we do to survive? It's not gonna be a conversation about student-teacher ratios. It's going to be survive. Now, I'm not trying to scare you because I don't know those numbers. But I do know there's scary websites that are saying all kinds of scary things, and a lot of our folks are chasing those things and clicking all, all the clicks. And, and I, I get that. If that inspires you to email your legislator, that's spot on. Let them know. But if it just creates fear in you, and that fear creates freeze, I would say, hold tight. We don't even know the numbers yet. Let's, let's teach. Let's have our kids learn. Let's chase the good stuff, and let's have a conversation about what we want for our kids. What, with all the factors I've told you that are concrete factors. Knowing that I might have to come back to this board in August and say, listen, that was really nice that you gave me a chance to talk for 30 minutes, but it's catastrophic news. And those are the words I will choose to use because that's what it will be. And that will create a different kind of reality than we could prepare for. And so with that all in mind, here we go. Told you I'm, I'm chatting. With all of this in mind, here we go. We need to realize that for me to close two elementary schools will require spending 33 to 46 million dollars. I cannot house 850 kids in Brookville right now. It cannot happen. So any thoughts, ah, we'll just close them and bring them in? It cannot hear me. We can't do it. So it's one of those two numbers. Just closing one, I've heard a lot, all right, well, just close one. We'll whip half the Band-Aid off. Hear my words when I tell you, closing one does not create significant savings. It just creates commotion. Our utility costs for the one building, whether you choose LES or MCS, is so minimal. Yes, it will be a savings, but when you talk about $200,000 in our budget, that isn't getting us much. It just creates commotion. And if people decide to leave because they don't like that decision, every kid that leaves is seven grand less than we have. So it doesn't take long to figure out that $200,000 of utility cost savings is gonna get nullified when people are like, look, I don't, I don't want to do that. For whatever reason. Whether it's LES or MCS, none of that is a solution. Closing two buildings is a considerable savings, but it all comes in staff. I've done all the math. I got all the charts. I'm telling you, any savings from closing the two is going to reduce jobs. And I don't know a lot of organizations that are seeking for, for their own people to be riffed. But that's what it looks like. Will we, do we have to do that at some point? I told you the word catastrophic. I ain't kidding. But to do it on the front end and say, no, this is what we think is best, leaves a lot of question marks for me around spending 33 to 46 million to do that when all the savings comes in staff reductions. And then we have a building of 850 kids that we have to process. And my friends, I have been a part of running three 900-person elementaries as central office staff. I was there when they were built, and I was there in the first three years as I tried to figure out how to run it. Traffic, arrival, dismissal, every lunch, every hallway. How do you run a special schedule on a six-day schedule? Where you have gym every six days? How does that function for kids? Yes, the student-to-teacher ratio is more balanced. Fair, fair. But you bring in all the other things that go with it. And I'm gonna say it. We have an issue that we need to solve. Brookville needs some help. I know that. Guys, I've been here six months. Give me a chance. We're coming. We're coming. And I know that hasn't been the case, but I see it. I responded quickly. The man is sitting in front of me. When I saw a problem that I could solve, we solved it. And we got you a great candidate, and he sat, and he came in, and he's done a great job. We brought you a dean because we saw there was a problem. That's not the only problem. We still have more to solve. We absolutely do, no question. And we're going to chase it. Shannon and I sit down constantly and talk about, what do we need? What do we need? What do we need? But I don't know that that's the solution. I, I don't know that that's the solution unless it has to be. Because of catastrophic changes. That, that's what we're going to get. Now, my friends at Northwest that run 900-person buildings, they're still my friends. And they've done a great job of making those adjustments, but it's, they will tell you the same. It took them three to five years just to figure out how to do hallways well, how to do lunch well. They're still working on arrival. Holy moly. Take Brookville Elementary Arrival right now and double the cars. You think we're on one now or 101 now? My goodness. There'll be cars at my office waiting to get in there. There are just realities to this that I'm just talking you through. And, and on top of that, our community is still looking for a plan. So I hear a lot, well, let's just wait, let's just wait, let's just wait. You've waited five years for this conversation. And I've already said out loud, August may bring some other conversations. I'm owning that. That's real. But I think you deserve this dialogue. And I haven't held anything back from you. There are no secrets here. Here's the other thing. As we approached the fall, we've been advised wisely to do an additional GO bond to keep our rate the same, to give us one more year with a small amount of money to do some projects with, to then start making those bigger decisions. Not a dime has been spent on any of the plan that I'm about to show you. And not a dime will be spent on a plan that I'm showing you until it arrives, no sooner than the fall, if not later. And then when it does come, that GO bond, if it's approved, because it's not my decision, when it's, if it's approved, those can be strategically spent according to what we need. Because we still gotta have kids in these buildings. And if a roof starts to leak, we gotta fix that. We also can spend that money on other things to keep things moving down this plan. And having a plan gives me a chance to find a plan. And we want to be future-ready. Here we go. So here's my recommendation. My staff, I sent this to you in email. No holdback, same words. Copy and paste it. Here it is. This is my recommendation. That doesn't mean it's your recommendation. This is my recommendation. And you saw all the slides leading to this. Here it is. I am recommending to continue our current five-school model for the foreseeable future. Our near-future focus for funding the master plan will be upgrading to all three elementary schools to ensure that they are structurally sound, safe, secure, modern, and future-ready. If this becomes our solidified plan, which is not my decision, my, my role was to give a recommendation, and I'm doing that. If this becomes the decision, we're gonna start talking amongst communities about what does it mean to be future-ready? Circle this right back to Portrait of a Learner, where we start to talk about what do we want our kids to know when they leave our system? What skills do we want them to have when they leave us? And how do we build those things? I'll give you one little piece. I assume that someone in the room is gonna say, I really want our kids to be someone who can collaborate with other people. Fair assessment's probably gonna show up. Well, then we need to foster that in our classrooms, which means that we need desks that can do that easily. So teachers can make a move and a move and a move and a move to quickly get groups together, to get kids talking, and then circle right back to the lecture, and then right back to the group. That is the type of future-ready we need to have. That's a 21st-century learning environment where we're getting kids together. That is all built into this. The POL, also does a POG, Portrait of a Learner, that I've been emailing everybody about, connects right to my recommendation, which connects right to where I think we need to go to do this best. Now, what I believe is next on our agenda is that we have a couple people from the community ready to speak. After that, the board takes back over. Good? Right?
We have two members of the public signed up to speak. First is Mr. Francis Brumbach. And if you would like to address the Board of School Trustees, you would need to sign up. Individuals must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. Individuals that have signed in are given three minutes to speak. A maximum of five individuals may address the board regarding the same topic, issue, or concern. Individuals are asked to avoid repetition and shall not be permitted to use the names of individual employees or students. Personal attacks on employees or students will not be tolerated. And as a reminder, this is public comment section, not a question-answer. Mr. Brumbach, you have three minutes, sir.
Yep, well aware of the time. Kind of stole my thunder a little bit on what I was going to speak about, but there's still more pieces to that puzzle. There are 12 bills in the House that will affect school board and school funding as well. The governor as well has said that these schools need to learn to be more efficient, do more with less. So I will guarantee you, what he painted as the picture will get worse. For the last 20 years at least, we've had descending student counts, which, that will deplete out the education fund. Our operation fund and our education fund, operation fund comes from taxes for capital projects such as this. So, if those two are going down, where do we get the money to keep the teachers that we have? How do we do that as well? Because that's one piece of the puzzle that wasn't even mentioned. Up to 15% of the operations fund can be transferred over to the education fund, and traditionally, that's where the teachers get their raises. We won't know anything until April 28th on what is happening as far as the legislative agenda goes. So that can be watched closely. In August, we'll get our student counts and have a general idea. And I would suggest uh, tabling this until a real discussion can be had with real numbers in August. That would be my recommendation. But the other part of this is having the transparency for us to show up and ask questions about, where did you get the sources? Have you considered this? What are the repercussions of that? And also give community members a, a chance to really allow their concerns with what they see as problems. Because there is a problem. There's inequities across our, our elementary schools. And we can turn a blind eye to it, but it's still there, and it's not fair to the kids. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is, we have a very bleak picture of decreasing funds, and this debt cliff that we're going to address is the only way. And this will be not only 10 years out, 20 years out. So it is very important that we get this right. And instead of having a vote on sentiment of, I want to keep the school open, they need to have it off statistics and understand why that decision was made, and it all, it needs to be brought to the public.
Next is Melissa Graff.
Hi, I'm Melissa Graff. I have three daughters at Brookville Elementary, kindergarten second and fifth. I want to speak tonight on behalf of the Brookville Elementary School. I am the Houndspack PTO president, so I am in and out of the building quite a bit, and I'm at all the events. The teachers are amazing and they work endlessly. However, there is not enough support. Some of the classroom sizes are 28-plus kids, and that's without eights. That's third grade. Kindergarten classes share eights, and a lot of the times they are being pulled to be subs for the day. When children have an outburst in, in class, your child's safety is at risk. So when you say structurally safe, maybe structurally it might be safe, but physically it's not safe. When a child has an outburst, that one single teacher has to evacuate the 20-plus other students. Who's watching those students? That teacher then has to calm the child down and call for help. The help is our principal, who is supposed to be doing her job with the teachers, but she's getting pulled to help with outburst. Not to mention the huge disruption in their schoolwork. How are teachers supposed to teach? This happened at least three times last year in my daughter's classroom, and that's just what I know of. That's just what she came home to cry about. I don't know the other times in other classrooms that's happening in. Children are sometimes made to have indoor recess because we don't have enough staff. It could be a beautiful sunny day, but we don't have enough staff. So play in your classroom today, okay? And then you wonder why we have outbursts. Your high-ability child is not being challenged. Your average student, it's falling behind. And your IEP students? They are not getting the support they deserve. And this is a state law. No one is thriving at Brookville Elementary. Not our students, not our staff, not our families. Teachers are spread too thin to meet the needs of all these students. You can have the best teacher in the world, but when you have this many children in one room, it doesn't matter. Year after year, teachers have begged for more aids, more support. This isn't new. This has been going on for years. They've been told, yeah, we'll get it. Yeah, no problem, we'll get it. Or they've been told, I'm sorry, we, we don't have the funds. We don't have the funds. You'll just have to power through. You got this. Teachers are tired. The Brookville Elementary building, let's be honest, it's beyond carpet, new carpet and paint. Last Friday at our carnival, we actually sat, sat their front desk in our, in the dark, the open area where people came in to check in. The light underground wire is completely burned up. We, we, we vacuumed in the dark once the sun went down. My daughter told me that the water was coming in the other day when it was raining and that there's mold in her classroom. We are tired of hearing potential future plans. Oh, Franklin County this is gonna do this. Oh, Franklin County is gonna do this. We need a plan. We need change. We need it. We need action. Tired of talking, tired of hearsay. If we combined all three elementary buildings and built a brand-new facility, we could unite. We could have the best working team together. Create an environment which our teachers deserve, but most importantly, our students deserve. If we facelift three elementaries, the state's such, and then the state shuts it down in two to three years or maybe even sooner, then what are you gonna do with an Brookville Elementary School that can't house 850 kids? Okay, so I'm gonna go have, um, so simple economics can tell you it's cheaper to combine into one school. And your Franklin County school corporations would then thrive and not barely survive. So on a personal level, real fast, as a parent, we chose Franklin County because of the community, all right? Unfortunately, or unfortunately, however you want to look at it, I live right on the line. I live 11 minutes from North Yorba Elementary, and I live 11 minutes from Brookville Elementary. We are having discussions at night what to do. And it's not looking good. It's sad. It's sad, it breaks my heart. But my number-one priority is my students' edu, or my kids', my personal kids' education. That's my number-one priority. Sometimes you have to set your feelings aside, your emotions aside, and make tough decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on to see if there's a motion. This presentation is the most information that's been given or discussed in my two-and-a-half years here, and the most direct information. We're not trying to use emotions, we're trying to use numbers and facts. You've had a brand-new administration for eight months and a new board for two months, three months. More discussion and positive movement has happened in the last two to six months than in the previous two-and-a-half years that I've been on this board. I have to take part of that blame because I was on that previous board. But I'm telling you, we are trying our best to use the data we have and the information we have available right now to make the best decision for the students, the staff, the community, and the corporation. We see the issues, we hear the issues. I had a meeting, a couple of us sat with the teachers the other day and listened to those things. And when statements are made of, we've been having the same complaint for the past decade, again, I'm gonna reiterate, we have a new administration and a new board. Give us time to hear you out and make the moves. That's all that I am asking. This community needs to know that we have a plan, and we will do the best we can to carry out that plan, whatever it is. If you have questions, come ask us. I promise you the answers are not on Facebook. We have had these meetings and discussions, so we do have answers. That is the whole reason for this, is to give you all of the information and the answers that we have been given thus far. With that.
Excuse me?
Mr. Gearing has made a recommendation. Is there a motion on the floor?
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
I would like to ask Ms. Franks to respond on, actually, our correspondence with our financial advisors before we move on.
Do you have a specific question?
Yeah, I'd like to know, because some of the things reported tonight, from my perspective, were part of the discussion, but there's some parts that were left out. So I would like to ask Ms. Franks to fill in any gaps that there may have been.
All I can speak to is the, I'm gonna speak to a conversation I had with our bond counsel and our financial consultants regarding the pending legislation. And their recommendation for us, because of the unknowns that are coming, and because the decisions and more accurate numbers will be had in April, and then our assessed value will come out in August, would be to not make any permanent plans until we had those accurate numbers.
Thank you.
I will say that Mr. Gearing's recommendation is not a permanent plan, it is a recommendation to have a future plan. As he stated in his presentation, there is a recommendation to do a smaller, shorter-term geo-bond just to keep the tax rate intact, not up, not down, and not lose the tax money, but keep it in place. So as the legislation passes, as the ADM comes in, we can get a more solid plan going forward. But we have to have a plan to start working on, not just kick the can down the road one more time. This is not a plan to take out a bond, this is not a recommendation or a vote to take out a bond. This is a recommendation on a plan.
Kevin, I have one thing to say, and I guess probably everybody knows how I feel about this, but I don't know how you can go build a house when you don't know how much money you can put into that house. And that's what we're doing right now, is we are guessing, guesstimation, on all these buildings. We do not have firm bids to fix any of these buildings. We do not have any, what our assessed value, our property tax, our DOAB, we don't know what they're gonna do. I disagree with Mr. Gearing, but that's okay, we've disagreed before. DOAB is watching all schools in the state of Indiana. And also, we just don't know what our property taxes are gonna do. And that's gonna make, like Mr. Gearing said, that we have no idea. And I don't know how we can proceed to do anything if we don't know how much money we have to do it. We've had several conversations about we can do this, we can do that, but how can we even do anything? I mean, I wouldn't build a house if I didn't know how much money I could spend, and you know projects always go over.
I understand that, and I'll add, I'll agree with Kevin, this is a very loose vision. As Mr. Gearing has presented, we have a lot of options. Every other option is going, almost every other option, I think, is raising the tax bill. And we don't even know where the property taxes are coming in, where those counts will be. So how much it will raise, it'd mean it's just outrageous to even guess, so I see that point. Beth, I see what you mean. We're not, you know, willy-nilly going out and building a brand-new mansion of a house. We literally have, right now, children that need education in schools. I really appreciate the speakers tonight and sharing personal, very personal stories. I myself live on a line that was closer to another school district than this one. We have to consider keeping that these children taken care of right now. We cannot continue to wait. We know that this is the most economical option. We know that the House Bill 270, that's been the scare tactic, I feel, for the past five years. Blowing this fear into everybody is not so much of a worry. That's the big worry, that's the shutting us down, is the enrollment, the House Bill 270. We, I believe, at the end of the year, beginning of this year, were off of the watch list from the state because of the excellent work Kendra Franks and her team has done to trim all the fat and be as efficient as we can. So we've done a ton of work up to this point, Kendra has, I'll give her that credit. So I see what you mean, that we're somewhat guessing at a dollar amount, but this is a very doable plan within those ideas. There's no dollar amount tied to this yet. For that reason, I do make the motion that we take the recommendation to continue our current five-school plan, including three elementaries for the foreseeable future, upgrading for the structurally sound, safe, secure, modern, future-ready.
Is there additional discussion?
We have a motion by Ms. Brennan. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a second by Ms. Wilson. Do we have any further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make a statement. The same financial advisor that directed us to take the zero bond, okay, also directed us to make no large projects, okay? Same person. Same person also said that we should have a full-blown financial study done before we do anything. This is our financial advisor. Now, in regards to the House Bill 270, it gets a little confusing about that. That has to do with attendance and a school corporation that's under distress, like we were on the watch list. And if you read the letter from them, it says if there's any changes, please notify us, okay? I was in Shannon's office on February 3rd, and I asked to have the count that day, and our count was 1,893, okay? 1,893. We had lost 62 students at that time, 400 and what, $485,000. So it's not something that we should take lightly.
Did we lose students or were they midterm graduations?
Well, that I can't tell you. I can just tell you about the counts. They could have been midterm, but however, the population is so in flux here. Another thing, too, we've had a five-year study on population, population growth. We're gonna be dropping in numbers for five years.
That's not exactly true. If we're gonna be, if we're going to look at the population studies, we've paid for tons of information. We've paid for the demographic studies, for the facility studies. It's time to take some action. Our enrollment numbers leak in high school and in middle school from, and I've studied back to 2016 today, looking at these. We've literally crunched so many numbers, we've taken the sentiment out, we've taken the emotion out. I've been accused of being the Mount Carmel girl since about two years ago when I came here. I don't really know why, I didn't go to Mount Carmel, I didn't grow up here at all. It's all about the numbers to me. That is something I see, I see numbers. And I see us leaking from high school. That's a district thing, that means let's get better. We're making obviously huge strides. Our high school, I think, is the best around, hands down. Thanks to some of these guys right here in the back. But it's really, our elementary numbers are predicted to increase over the next five?
Ten years.
Ten years?
It was in the demographic study that's available online.
It's in a demographic study. Our elementary numbers are going to be increasing, so are families having smaller, less children?
What happens, what happens in the demographic study is, because I've read the demographic study so many times, and I just want you guys to know, I love our community, I love Mount Carmel, I love Laurel, and I love Brookville. And I'm a St. Michael's girl, if we really want to go down to it, but it's so important. And you all have impacted my own kids so much. You've been great for all of them, you've taught them so much, and I appreciate it. But the demographic study shows that there will be an increase because of the baby boomer population that primarily takes up most of the housing right now. As I look in the room, I'm gonna use my parents, for instance. They live across from the elementary school, they've lived there forever. Eventually, they're 65, 66, somewhere in there, sorry, Mom and Dad. But they're eventually going to be moving. They've already talked about it, they can't maintain their house, it's too big, it's too much with the pool, it's this, it's that. So as they move, and they move into, let's say, nursing homes, ALFs, Florida, I don't know, wherever they want to go, those houses open up. And as houses open up, we allow an increase for younger families who have children. I'll speak for myself, I rent. I've rented forever, you know why? Because there isn't any place to buy in Brookville that's reasonable and within, you know, a budget that you might still be able to live a life outside of just making a mortgage payment. And that's not what I want for my life. But there's a lot of things. I've been to all three of the elementary schools. They're not terrible schools, they're actually really great schools with really great people. And, yeah, and I get that, I so get that, I get that.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, this is not an open discussion.
And I understand that. And I know that teachers feel, I'm a teacher. Yeah, and I get that.
We are too, we're here for the teachers.
We know that.
Yes.
We know how awesome they are.
And I, and I want, and I want them to feel supported. I want them to have that support. And that's the thing, you know what? Like, we are starting, and that's what we're asking. We're asking you to give us and be open-minded and allow us to bring you the help that you need.
Mr. Verci.
I understand. I understand. And it's not just the low kids that are falling behind, it's the high kids just the same. I know, I know. I do. I understand, trust me, I do. And. I understand.
It's all three schools, guys.
I completely agree, I mean, we are here for the teachers too. I would love, I would think we are. I mean, we're making big strides, I think, with a future vision, being more intentional. We don't know names, let me put it this way, we don't even know names. We don't know students' names, we don't know personnel names. This is where the administration comes in, and like Kevin's pointed out a few times, we have administration that is new in the central office at least, and we're making moves, we're making adjustments. We're getting things identified, new eyes, fresh eyes, I think, are always a big help because then you can see these things, you make those moves. Yes, I'm serious, I'm not gonna sit up here and blow hot air. I'm serious, and I agree, I think Brookville deserves.
We're not allowed to.
I am not allowed, Kevin, you can take back control.
Do you want to add?
Just give us a chance, I'm three months into this. Well, just let me finish. You're gonna see my face over at Brookville Elementary a lot more. I was delighted to come and meet with you all the other day, and Brandy and I had come out previous to that and met with you. I didn't have a clue what was going on over there until Brandy and I came out to see you. And it was obvious that first visit that there was a problem. And I'm going to talk with Mr. Gearing and the rest of the board. I would like to see you guys have some more aides. I think you probably need one more teacher, I think, is it the third or fifth grade that's just overpopulated? To see if we can't find it in the budget to get you some help. But when you have to deal with seven members, it takes a minute. Just give us a chance, we're all behind you up here.
We agree.
We hear you.
I mean, we hear you, and you're not alone, so I feel like there, but there's a conception that Brookville is just very, very much full that way. And we've looked at the classroom numbers for that reason. I'm looking at a teacher right now that I know there's 27, 28 in that class. My daughter's in it. Yes. We have, my biggest issue, and the reason I love putting a future vision out is because we have been cannibalizing ourselves. We are destroying, these elementaries are at war for years.
Ms. Holman, do you have anything you want to say?
Teachers, I do understand you, and please don't misunderstand what I'm going to say, but we won't get anything done if we all talk out of turn. If you, I was a teacher for 40 years. If you want to speak, if our president will allow it, if you could just raise your hands so that we can hear everything and not just, you know what I'm saying? So when your kids in your classroom are all talking at the same time, if I say, hey, just a moment, let me get through there. But let me tell you just one thing before Kevin recognizes you at that point. Yes, I've been on the board for four years, and yes, we have tried to do several things, and there have been plans, and they were tabled, but we weren't allowed to do anything. There were plans, and they were tabled, and we weren't allowed to do anything. This is the first time in my four years that someone has actually come with a plan. Did I like everything at the very, very beginning? I'm sorry. And he knows, because I questioned, I did, it's just my nature to go ahead and question. And I needed the numbers as to why it was he presenting this as opposed to this. I love Mount Carmel, it's great, I've been out there, I love it. Laurel, haven't been there as many times as I would like to, but I've been there. My daughter was a teacher at B E S, I came to B E S frequently. Mrs. McLeire, yeah, the curly-haired kid. I loved coming and just being a part of what was going on there. I understand what you're going through, but just as the other members have said, I do. I've been in classrooms when I was teaching where it was as large as what you're saying. And I don't know where our budget is as far as getting more aides in. I don't, I'm not privy to that at this time, but as Greg said, let us at least discuss it. But as far as a plan that is finally. But as far as a plan, that it's finally, something is being pr- provided, the first three, they don't meet up to where it would even meet with a debt. But the last two, four and five, would at least meet with that and give you facilities that would be desirable. Just let us work with that and let us know. For those who have written in the last two, three weeks, I've been answering as many of your letters as possible and telling you, "Thank you for your loyalty. Thank you for your dedication." But you need to tell me more what you need so that I can bring that to the table. Go ahead. It's your job.
Let me say something first, and then I will call on you guys. I just, like Ms. Holman said, the back and forth wasn't getting us anywhere. So, a couple of things. Talking about aides and class size. As the presentation said, having a plan for the foreseeable future gives us a chance to strategically fund the plan to ensure that we are ready to be future-focused and plan for aides, class sizes, all those things. We are struggling right now. Uh, we just talked the other day with a state rep about a law that would be really nice. That would help us out with timelines. We go into school years and we're chasing people that leave at the last minute. But we have to have a plan so that we can plan for that plan. Okay? Right now, we don't have a plan. You're looking for answers, but there's no plan to provide answers to. That's what we're trying to do. As it was stated, uh, tired of potential FC plans and rumors. We're trying to eliminate that right now. We're trying to get rid of the rumors and tell you exactly what our plan is. That's the goal here. If we know what the plan is, we can start moving forward. That would follow, fall in line with the comment of make promises and commit. I don't, I'm not sure who said that, but that's exactly what we're trying to do. We're trying to make, make the promise and commit to it. That is exactly why we're, we're here. We are tired of not knowing either. It's been a long process. No, it is, to your point, it is not a new idea. And I admitted when I said that. I'd, I was on this board for two years, and it was constantly, "We have to do something. We have to do something. We have to do something. All right, let's talk. Let's talk." No talks. Nothing. We've done more in the last three, four months, six months, I'll say, than ever before to this point. We have done more research. We have gotten more information, even if it was late, even if it was inaccurate and we had to get it corrected. Um, equal, equality, aides, all that stuff, that goes back to having a plan. You want to teach your kids, you don't just go in and wing it every day. I assume you have a plan when you go in, right? So, we want to have a plan. And once we have that plan, we can sit down and have the discussions. Okay, where do we need to look? Where do we need to make some adjustments? Again, it's saying, "This has been a problem for years?" Again, we have a new top administration. We have fairly new board, and I think a new outlook on things. To the point of the presentation, I'm gonna ask one question, not for discussion, but does, does anybody here foresee us getting more than forty-five million? I'll ask Kendra. No. So, the options of new elementary at fifty-five, two new elementaries at sixty-one, new elementary at, at Brook, or three new elementaries at fifty-five, two new elementaries at sixty-one, new elementary just at Brookville at forty-six are all over the limit. I'm gonna say this as a joke, but anybody that wants their taxes raised, I'll put another paper over there. You sign up for the list, and I'll come see you when we try to do it. Nobody wants the taxes to go up. We're not trying to do that. We're trying to do what's best for the kids. Okay? Then the staff, and I'll put it in that order. Kids, staff. So, renovating is not just lipstick. And I, sorry if that offends anybody. We're trying to make everything better and address the inequalities in facilities and education. If you were to move all the kids to one campus and put it at eight-fifty, we are maxed out on money. We are maxed out on capacity. If we do grow, we're out of luck because we don't have anywhere to put them. We don't have any money to build on for twenty years. If we move everybody to one location and we lose kids, guess what? We're getting rid of even more staff. Again, I'll say this somewhat jokingly. Raise your hand if you, put your hand down, Sarah. Raise your hand if you want to quit. Because that's what's gonna happen if we do that, and especially if we lose kids. So, we are trying to make a plan and move forward. So I'm gonna ask, I, I'm welcome, anything, any comments for now. We'll see what we can say, but is it factual or emotional? Because we're trying to look at the facts first. Because we can get into the emotional, how detrimental it would be to both communities if you were to close either of those schools. Think about what it would do to the community of Laurel. Think about what it would do to the Mount Carmel area. If you don't have that school there, we talk about bus rides. Guess what? It just got longer. So, do we want to try to save two-hundred thousand dollars to spend thirty-three million? Or do we want to make everything better, leave us a little bit of room, if we do have money, to maybe upgrade other facilities? Because going back to the study, the demographic study is available online, and it shows total K-three-five from now till thirty-three, thirty-four year, going from eight-fifty-six to nine-fifty-four. Middle school and high school, dropping. It shows elementary rising in numbers. So if that happened, they won't fit in that elementary that we just spent thirty-three million dollars on, or forty-five, or sixty-one, or whatever number you want to go with. So, those are the numbers and the factors.
Is H C K through?
K-three-five, yes. What, the way we have to look at those numbers is K-three, yeah, if, if we were, if we were to move, anybody, sorry. Hey, you didn't raise your hand. Everybody else has their hand raised. Ms. Foster, or Sarah?
I want to know how your plan will create equality between all three buildings as far as, uh, class sizes, uh, as far as special times, as far as aides, special ed. I want to know how your plan is going to create equal classes. We all have, you know, they have thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. We have twenty-five. Are you gonna meet in the middle at twenty for all of our classes?
I'll, I'll let him answer here in a second, but what I, what I will say is, if we were to consolidate and, and, and whatever, and whatever option, if we were to consolidate, now we have to plan how to move people around and make those plans for five years down the road as we build everything. If we keep everything open, we know everything's staying open. Now, again, we can have that strategic plan to I know. If we know that we're keeping all three open, now we can put together that strategic plan of what funds do we? If we know we're keeping, if we know we're keeping all three buildings open, we can now build that strategic plan based on what funds we have. Once the legislation is done and we have enrollment, we've got through kindergarten roundup, we can look at who we can hire and where we can move people.
Kevin?
Yes.
When you said keeping all things equal, I'm so sorry, did you mean, um, class size? So you would be talking, would it be just the specials?
No.
Okay, not specials. Yeah, that's what I thought. Right. Keeping all things equal, meaning the class size, so that, say that in, in a, a given class in BES, that there's twenty-six in the third grade. And if you had heard that at Mount Carmel or Laurel, that it was less, is that what you're referring to?
Yes. How are they, see, we get paid the same, same amount of money. We have, um, this, we have
So, first name, Sarah?
Do, uh, parent-teacher conferences. We have more report cards to do. We have more, uh, grade work to do, more kids to teach, more, uh, special ed kids that are like, she spoke about, we're having to clear out those classrooms. The special ed is not being taken care of. How are you gonna make our classrooms equal so they're doing the same amount of work that we are?
What would your suggestion be?
Hired, consolidate the schools.
Well, the, Sarah, the, Sarah, the demographics of the school are, are, are different. I mean, every building has to be analyzed for, for the problems and the difficulties, like you're saying.
You said, you said move the lines, right?
Someone, yeah.
You have school choice. You can move the line wherever you want. They can choose to go whichever school they want.
Well, and that's what's happening. They're all coming, a bunch are coming to Brookville.
Some, but As far as equality, if, if the outlying schools know we have a plan, that might bring some back. And then those class sizes would come up. I mean, you, you say hire, you say hire more people, but we can only pay what we get for ADM enrollment. So if we get more kids, which is the overall goal here, then we would have more money to pay more teachers. Yeah, thank you. Sorry.
So, I understand exactly what they're saying. I think sometimes things are apparent across the board. I think sometimes people assume different things. I have twenty-seven kids in my classroom. I have evacuated my classroom three times for a kid that broke a glass door last year. Um, I have no aide that comes into my room. I have thirty-five minutes special. I think a lot of things aren't just apparent that everybody knows what everybody's doing across the corporation. I'm not saying that I have small numbers in our building. I have a huge number in my room. And you know what? I have not emailed any of you to complain about it. It is what it is.
It's not. It's not.
I go with it. Like, this is the new generation sometimes, and I just have to doubt my teaching and do something new with it.
No.
Zach. Go ahead, Zach.
Uh, so I just have a question. You guys formulated a plan K-through-five. So in two thousand and two, when F C M S was built, it was house for roughly, I would say, probably about like seven hundred kids. It's six through eight right now. Back in the day, when it first was open, it was five through eight. So, did that number change? Is if you guys sent fifth grade to the middle school, so then that number for the elementaries go down? So, you're, you're planning for an eight-hundred-and-fifty, eight-through-five elementary. If right now, if our F C M S was five through eight in the whole district.
I'll answer. You want me to answer? You guys keep tapping.
It's barely six through eight with three-sixty, or three-eighty-nine, okay? So if you do combine the elementaries and all that into one school, and then you send five through eight throughout the whole district to the F C M S, with current numbers right now, you're at five-eighty-five at F C M S. Then the numbers go down to about seven, seven-forty-seven, seven-fifty-something in the elementary, which is lower than that number right there. So, could that then, instead of forty-six million, that could be, drop us down to below forty-five? So, have you guys looked at that? Because when I was at, uh, the middle school as a counselor, we had about ten or eleven classrooms that were completely empty, not u- utilizing properly. Some were storage. Some aides had their own room, like for themselves, like a whole classroom an aide would have. And if you would have one or two students per period at that. So, you know, we can do something to utilize those classrooms a lot better than what we are doing right now in that current building. So, have you guys looked at that? That's just facts. Like, if you wanted facts, I just want to give you those facts and another option so you can look at consolidating these schools.
We, we have talked about that. Actually, I brought it up myself, that I knew we can move kids over there. So.
So I'll let Mr. Garing answer. I'll briefly, um, Miss Brennan and I talked about this. So, back then, you had only BES fifth graders there. You're talk, you're talking about moving three schools of fifth and sixth grade there. So, no, I don't think, but I will let him answer that, if you don't mind.
But it's still under six hundred kids in that school.
You're fine. I understand, but
That's our whole district right there, five-eighty-five, five-through-eight.
What I'm saying is, what you're talking about in the past at F C M S was just the fifth grade from Brookville Elementary, correct?
That's correct. I noticed that, actually, um, when I was looking at numbers today in twenty-sixteen, before in the, the seventh and eighth grade was all consolidated inward, it was Brookville Elementary had fifth grade there and sixth grade there. So that was interesting because I was literally wondering, what, what, what were they doing there? I, I didn't know. I don't know that history of that. So, great information. I mean, again, we've considered a lot. I think we've talked about this. And Mr. Garing, were you going to speak to this? Or no?
Anytime anyone would like you to.
And I think, like I said, just to end that, I do worry, you know, twenty-one million elementary schools. You spend seven million to Mount Carmel, Laurel, whatever, state legislation is getting worse. Two to three years, you have, you were forced to close one of those schools or even both. A charter school, like we all know Riverside, can buy that seven million dollar that you guys just put in there for a dollar.
So, I'll expound on that. So I'm coming to you, Sarah. And Sarah, before I call you, will you come up to the microphone? And let me say this. Sorry, they can't hear you online if you're not at the microphone. That's not for us. That's for online.
Sure.
So, um, sorry, Zach. I was telling her and
I tried to speak loud.
Thank you. Thank you for the facts. I appreciate the numbers.
Go ahead.
I am co-president of the Hounsback. I'm a parent and I'm a teacher. I am a parent number one and always will be. I have taught at Mount Carmel, and it is a beautiful school. I love these ladies. Paula teaches, she has third grade challenge. Brookville does not have challenge. Laurel does not have challenge. That's just one example. Those are the challenge students who, as parents, you feel grateful that your kid is in that situation, right? Your kid can learn on their own, but it is tough. I would, the special needs students at Brookville, their needs are not being met, and that is the number one concern. We have kindergarteners coming in that need more support than we could ever offer. If you look on paper at the facts, or the facts that we're going off of, the numbers are not correct on student ratios. Our aides are not in those kindergarten classrooms full-time, not even halftime. Um, so you may look at the ratio numbers and see there's not a huge difference, or I believe there is, but it may, basically, it's worse than what it looks like on paper, is my point. There are not full-time aides, um, in any class that I'm aware of. The ones that are, are one-on-ones with special needs students. They are not there to help the teacher and the other students. Um, I encourage you to look at the special needs issue at that school, the behavior issues. Kids cannot learn in that environment. And I love all of these teachers. I love all these teachers. And it's not a what school is better. It is that the kids at Brookville need to change tomorrow. We need, you can hire more aides tomorrow as a short solution until there's a bigger solution. The class sizes, there needs to be four in third grade. There needs to be four in fourth grade. We cannot crunch this in and expect anything to get better. We are gonna lose families and we're gonna lose teachers. And I, that is my whole heart speaking. And you have to stop and listen to these teachers and these parents. It's not about one school being better than the other. It is about these kids not getting their needs met. The average kids, their levels are going down. The low kids, they're getting lower. And it is not the teachers. It is not the administration at that school. It is that there needs to be more funding, so there's more bodies in the building. And that is a fact. So I encourage you to get in there and see what the numbers actually are. That's my recommendation.
So
Thank you, Sarah.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, just a simple math. For more funding, we have to have more students or get more money from other grants. We can't just magically make money.
We do keep getting a lot more students, so I don't understand why more needs.
Say that again. I'm so, I'm sorry, Sarah. I can't.
We do keep getting more students at Brookville. Like, every other week, there's more coming. So I don't understand why it can't more immediately be reflected in a new aide get hired when, for their third grade classes or whatever it may be. That's a struggle.
So, the money, the money is only determined twice a year by A D N.
There you go.
It's not, it's not an immediate, we can't say, "Hey, we have ten more kids. We need more money." It's twice a year, the A D N count. That's why October, we were, we were, Mr. Garing was struggling, not struggling, but striving. Wrong word. Striving to get over nineteen-hundred, huh?
That's a very different word.
So, yes, it's not an immediate. And that goes to another point of, okay, we have a classroom with twenty-two. All right? Four kids move in. Now we have twenty-six. It's a big difference. I get it. But if we go and hire another teacher and split that into thirteen and then two kids le- leave, now we're down to twelve kids per class, and that's just not wise. It'd be great if every class could be that way and we had the money to do it. Don't get me wrong. That's not the, that's not the argument. But we, I said this at the, the, uh, teacher meeting when we got together. This is not a popular comment, but this is a corporation and a business. We have a budget. That's all we can do. We can't magically make more money. That, that's the reality of it. So, having a plan now gives us the opportunity to get ahead of this, get out, push that plan, say, "This is what we're doing. We are committing to this. So, look at the programs we have at the high school, middle school, everything. Bring your kids back." The first, the first goal is to stop the bleeding, the people leaving. Second is to get kids that are supposed to be here back. Third, maybe a pipe dream, but I think it can happen, is to get kids to transfer in. It's really hard for us with the location of the middle school and high school. There's a lot of people that live closer, closer to the school.
Kevin, I don't think, and I'm not saying that you're wrong, but once kids get in junior high and high school, they have to have a pathway. And when they have a pathway and they start in that pathway, they don't want they don't want to leave and go to another school where the state pathway is the same. But it, it's very difficult for that student, whether that student's, uh, uh, an advanced student, where they want to take all these advanced classes, and then this school may have some other requirement to get in that. Or if they're, um, a mediocre student and they've got their pathway, but they not, might not be able to get into those. So that kind of puts the student behind if they don't have to get into that class. So, um, I was talking about, I was talking to a, um, a state person about this this week, that the pathways have kind of put the kids where they are until they graduate. And I mean, if they move with their family, of course, there's accommodations that you can help with that. But the pathways the state has made, it is, I'm not sure if I was a sophomore in high school that I would want to move to somewhere else. You know, I don't know. I, I just don't know.
I don't disagree with that. I guess I'm not, um, go ahead. Come on. Go ahead, Katie.
I'm, I'm, my heart is broken for you. It really is. My heart is broken for you. And the wheels in my head are just going round and round and round because of being in education as long as I was. And it, unfortunately, my personality is, please let me fix it, but I don't know how to fix it. Um, and I'm certain that you have looked at every avenue. And I understand what the state is saying when we don't have the money right there. So, and I'm going to say this because I had asked one of my friends who is a teacher out at Mount Carmel if she ever needed to volunteer. When I was still teaching and those were allowed at that time, and I had wonderful parents. I had grandmas that volunteered to come every single day, and they sat with reading groups for an hour or two every day. I've had parents that have volunteered to come in and help grade papers. And of course, you don't have papers anymore. You're basically predom, predominantly on the internet. But have we reached out to that point to let people know? Because I was told, one, probably because I'm on the board, but no, that's okay. You're doing what you need to do. But I know of so many people that if they knew the need was there, they would love to volunteer. But you need to let us know. I will partner for you.
Did Craig leave?
Yes.
He never spoke. Okay. Go ahead, Sarah.
I just have one more comment or question, something to think about maybe. Um, I have only been here for three years. I taught in Connersville for the majority of my, uh, people have come to answer.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Can you come up to the microphone? I'm sorry. Yes, and I, to everybody at home, I apologize if you're listening, that we did not think about that when we started taking questions.
Okay. I just wanted to pose a question or, uh, something for you guys to think about also. Taught in Connersville for most of my teaching career. Um, when we got to a certain number in classrooms, they would cap those classrooms and say, new kids. We don't have any more room for you here in this third grade classroom, or this third grade. You need to go out to the next closest school. Could that be something that we could think about doing at Brookville when we have twenty-seven, twenty-eight kids in a third grade classroom where, uh, Carmel or Laurel have fifteen, twenty? Why not send those out to another school? And they do that in Connersville. I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, so we're not overburdened with too many kids in other schools.
Just my quick thought.
I don't, no, I don't need your opinion. I've just, I've been honored with your opinion before, but I just, I just wanted to give you an idea.
Yeah. Thank you for that. I've, I've experienced that myself when I was growing up, so I do appreciate the idea.
There's nothing else. We will close discussion and move to vote April. Quickly, please.
I'm sorry. So I was definitely not going to speak tonight, but, you know, now I'm here. I understand the numbers. I've come to these board meetings for the last two years. I, I get what the state is probably going to do. And so with that in mind, I think that we should be putting together a plan that is going to fall in line with what our state funding is possibly going to look like. What I really want to say tonight is a house divided will fall. And I don't know if you all don't realize this, but right now, the board continues to be divided. Our community continues to be divided. We have elementary school teachers against one another, sitting in the same room tonight. At a minimum, we should be calling ourselves Franklin County Elementary Schools. And take maybe the label of the towns off of it so that we can have one step toward unity. That's at a minimum of what we need to be doing. We do need to equalize. Because I don't know if you know it, but I have students that come from Laurel. And I would like to see the numbers, how many of them actually are still in their challenge or advanced classes after they get into seventh grade? Because last time I checked, two out of about seven have made it through their challenge classes. Tell me why that would be. I bet it's because they're not getting the same opportunities of having challenge in third grade or having challenge in fifth grade. And then they're thrown into these advanced classes and they can't survive unless they sit it for two hours at a dining room table with their parents. And not every parent can do that. So I think as we think about what our future looks like, can we just consider how we actually need to move forward as a community? And how we can best unify at the elementary level so that when they move to seventh grade, there's not an option to go to a different school? But they're already in a pathway, Beth. They're already with a bond. They already have community. They've already got friends. And they're not trying to make a new way. Because at seventh grade, if you're coming from Laurel, Mount Carmel, it don't matter where you go. So let's just please stop being divided and try to be in unity as we move forward. And it starts with the board and it ends with the students.
Thank you.
Anything else from board members? Anything to add?
Uh, I'd love to have a moment.
Sure.
That's okay. So what has happened at Brookville is not new to me as I've walked your halls and I've come in your classrooms. And I, I've been in the rooms. I've seen the numbers. And I would just say a few things. One, I've been here six months. And we are already making changes. We're already making plans for next year about what we need to think about and consider, and how do we move forward. Secondly, I would be very cautious about assumptions. Recently, we shared a document at discussions that showed class sizes. Recently, that same document landed at the board level to say, okay, this is what we actually have. This is what's on roster across the board. Because it could feel one way, but rosters look a different way. And that is not to say that we don't have an issue at Brookville. That, that's not what that says. Not at all. I had to chase down the concept of we have eight to, eight per classroom in one building and twenty-eight in another. And so I started asking Shannon, I asked Shannon, I want a real number. Give me that, that actually, go by classroom. I want to see everything line by line. And so she was able to produce that. None of that means that things are where we want them to be at Brookville. It's not. We are chasing solutions. No question. If nothing else, then in the, since June, so I guess it's been a bit more than six months, but since June when I got here, time after time, my team has been chasing solutions. And we will continue. We're not done chasing solutions. We haven't landed at the pinnacle. I personally don't believe that the solution lies in a facility plan that creates reductions in force. A facility plan that creates a huge cost for us to pull everybody together and then have to process what it's like to run an eight-hundred-and-fifty-person building. And to Zach's question earlier that never got answered, and I apologize. Um, some of this is also philosophy around what grade should be at what band and what those decisions have to look like. And what is there, is there room for this or is there room for that? But I'm telling you that we have been solution-oriented as a team since June. That hasn't changed. And I hear you and have heard you around, we have a problem. We may not agree on solution. But we definitely agree that we have something we need to chase after. We need to do better for our student-to-teacher ratio. Keep in mind that hiring seasons, hiring teachers in November and December to pull up a new class roster isn't a, a, a real reasonable solution either. Where you have a class, the kids love their teacher, and they do. Then you come in and say, well, you know what? New superintendent. I see it now, so let's go ahead and pull a teacher in and make it two of fourteen. But which fourteen go? That's not a viable solution either. But we have been and continue to be solution-oriented. I would also ask you to be mindful of reaching out to your Mount Carmel or Laurel counterparts and saying, hey, I heard this. Is this true? Because a lot of rumor and speculation is going into a lot of feeling around what it must be like in name the place. Just be cautious of that. I have been looking for details and facts and, and chasing solutions. My team is chasing solutions. This is not new. We will continue to chase solutions. Absolutely. Tonight was a chance to say, what is the plan for these buildings? Is the solution consolidation with all factors considered, with everything that you see? Or do we need to go find a different solution? The, the response wasn't, it's just going to stay the way it is. The response wasn't, just deal with it. The response was, this is not the viable solution to this issue. We are still solution-oriented. That hasn't changed. And I've heard you tonight, but everything you've said tonight, I've seen. And so we've been having endless discussions about what can we do? What should we do? How can we move forward? What does Brookville need? What does Mount Carmel need? What does Laurel need? And what does the high school, middle school need? Those conversations have not ended and are ending anytime soon. So my commitment to you is, should not surprise you because I've been walking the path, because trust is consistency over time. And if my team has been consistently chasing solutions in the very short amount of time that we've been here, I hope that you could say, sounds like the same kind of person who's going to chase the next solution as we go forward. This board does a great job, but this board doesn't interview a single candidate for a teaching position. This board doesn't say, Dustin, go hire. They can, absolutely, but that's not the nature of the board. So as we walk the path, they say yes to the candidates, yes to the model, yes to the spending. But on the front end, it's up to our team to say, hey, we have needs. Hey, we need to move some things around. Part of what's happening has been decisions that have been made prior to us getting here and this year since we were here. There have been decisions made that have put us in a tougher spot than we were originally regarding staffing at Brookville. That, that's real. And so we are solution-oriented around changing some of the way things are being decided. Changing the way we're using staff as we're driving forward. So consistency over time, I hope can say, well, we at least know that change is coming. I, I can't ask you to commit to that. You've been living this life for years. I don't know what it's like to be you and, and walk this path for all these years. What I do know is what it's like for this team since we landed. And that isn't going to change. I've never once stopped striving for the next thing to make us better. That doesn't stop tonight. Even if I disagree with what you said, even if you hurt my feelings, which you didn't, we're fine. It's not going to change what we're doing, even if you don't agree with this plan. It doesn't mean we're not going to keep striving. And we will. That hasn't changed. I'm very thankful that you showed up tonight. It means a lot. You've been here for three hours, two hours, some of you, some of you, three, got here early. It means a lot to you. But I want you to know, it means a lot to us, too. It means a lot to us. And I would ask everyone to chase facts, not rumor. I would ask everyone to show empathy towards your counterparts. And keep talking about what you wish would happen so we could keep chasing the good stuff. Mr. Irvin, it's up to you what happens next. We are, we do have a motion in a second.
If there's no other discussion, Ms. Brennan, would you like to restate your motion, just as a reminder?
I will. So I make the motion to continue, uh, our current five-school model for the foreseeable future. Um, our near-future focus for the funding on the master plan is upgrading the three current elementarys to ensure they're structurally sound, safe, secure, and modern and future-ready.
Do we have a second? Ms. Wilson, any other discussion?
I will add, I hear all of you loud and clear. Please know that a consolidation is not the answer to all of your problems. I hear lots of very passionate people here with hard days, and I hear you, uh, parents. Consolidation is not going to be the answer. I feel like that's been sold for years. Um, this is the result of inaction for multiple years that has got us to this point where we are from just waiting and doing nothing. This is a plan to do something at all three schools and not just the paint. As Mr. Gearing has, has alluded to, it's, it's going to be a much bigger, um, much bigger look, I think, than that. That's my only comment.
Before we vote, I would like to say something, and I'm going to reiterate what I said before. Um, I just don't know how we can say, come up with a plan when we don't know what kind of money we're going to get. I mean, that just makes no sense whatsoever to me. Maybe I don't understand, but I don't know how you can say we can do this, this, and this if we don't know how much is in our pocketbook. Um, also, um, I would like to see this held off until we knew what the assessment, the property values, what the state's going to do. Uh, and then we can realistically go about what we think we need to do. But voting on this tonight, I just, it doesn't make any sense to me when you don't know how much money you have.
Anybody else?
I think that moving in with this, um, because when we first started talking about the plan or a master plan, and this was where it was difficult, and I probably didn't, I didn't, it wasn't that I disagreed, but it was, there was one point where it said warm, safe, and.
Dry.
Dry. And I didn't agree with that, that, but it wasn't one that he was presenting. Nothing would be warm, safe, and dry. But I think in going with this plan, it's the same as within your household. You think in terms of, hmm, can we stay inside this house at this time? Or should we look at other avenues as far as if we're going to put it up on the market? The only way that you can do that is if you examine what is out there. I love what you said with taking off the name on the school. Those were things that I suggested. If we had three, and I threw it out there, you know, that would be great because it does put everyone on an even keel. But with this plan, it's not that we're voting on, oh, hey, we're going to build, we're going to update three schools. It's just giving us a starting point. The same is in your household. You make that plan, and then you realize, oh, that's not going to work. And so you step back and you look at the next plan. It just gives us somewhere to start. And it would be the first time in my four years that we have actually went ahead and started. We have a great board, and I don't feel we're divided. I've had so many reach, people reach out to me with their opinions. I can reach out to Mr. Gearing at any time, and I have, even on personal issues. Please get a hold of my husband because I couldn't get a hold of him, and my mom was being rushed to the hospital. I can call my president. I can call my, my co-partners. It doesn't mean that we're divided just because we don't agree on something. I don't always agree with my husband, but he's the best guy around, and he's mine. So just give us a chance to have a. So just give us a chance to have a plan, to start a beginning.
All right, we'll close discussion. There's a motion in a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Five, all those opposed, right hand, two. Got them?
Got them, thank you.
Motion is passed. I will say this. I feel this is the best path forward. It is not a concrete plan. This is just, as Ms. Holman said, a plan that if the money is there, it gives us the most flexibility and opportunity to do a lot of things. Not all of our eggs in one basket for a shiny building. That being said.
Our next step, just to circle back, and we could take a, why don't we take a sixty-second pause, everybody take a deep breath? Our next step is old business as we go down the list. I do have your agenda. My agenda disappeared with one of our monthly winners. So our old business, go ahead.
Old business is the board policy that has been presented to us at the previous meeting. That was for discussion only. Tonight, we have discussion and board action. Does anyone have any questions on the policies that were presented?
Why was there so many changes?
So NEOL comes through quarterly with changes that reflect federal as well as state changes. A lot of times, they do some language cleanup inside of that so that they come in packages like that every couple of months.
So is this something that we'll do how often?
Typically, typically quarterly.
Seems like that's all we did last year.
Yeah. And, and just for my former life, it's very similar. They come in and essentially they go through line by line. It comes to the board as info, then action. And if there's any questions along the way throughout the whole process, I'm always available for those phone calls.
Any other questions, discussion, motion?
I'll move.
Mr. Simonsen, second?
Second.
Who's that?
Jessica. No more discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven oh. Next is new business.
Yes, so under new business, we have a couple of different items here, each with its own action. First is a new job description under technological, technology director. Essentially, we have staff members that are currently doing a role that's very different than their job description. And so we are looking to correct that. To be clear with the board, this would not be any new hire. This would be an internal posting only. And then whomever was to win the position, as long as we have a viable candidate, then we would not replace them in their current role. But the job description does more specify what they're doing, as well as the salary, more of what they're doing. There, we've asked a lot of some of our folks around networking and network engineering for a number of years, and this is a very important role in 2025, more important than ever. And so I recommend Boardman Ford with the job description as listed. Later on, after interviews and process, we would bring a candidate forward for the position. But I have to start with a job description.
Do we have a motion?
I have it. Do all the people that are doing the technology now know that this is, have you told them that this is up?
So once this gets approved, it's gonna go out to them to say this has been approved as a job description. Then it creates a posting. Then we have interviews, and so they'll know at that point, hey, this is what's available to you. Once we have a job description, I can tell them what the job description is, then they can choose to apply.
Do we have someone that's leaving?
No, we do not. I, I hope not. That's, that's not the plan.
I'm, I'm just kind of confused because we don't usually do job descriptions. But like you said, the job is changing, but usually when we hire someone new, we do a job description. So I was just, I mean, do you anticipate changing any of the people that we have now from another job?
Yes. Yes, so.
Do they know that?
Well, they'll, they'll apply for it. So let me, let me explain. So we have a need around someone to do a specific job. That job is a considerable job around networking and network engineering, things of that nature. Right now, one of the folks that are doing this as a portion of their job is tackling that as well. And so we are looking to identify that as a step up from our current step of this type of role. Once I have this description that it exists, we will create a posting. Then one of the three that are in this contention for this, or two, or three of the three, could then choose to apply. Once they apply, if we have more than one candidate, or if we just have one, we sit down, we interview, we discuss, and we figure out, is this the right candidate? I can't go forward with interviews and a posting without the job description because that would be inappropriate because then all of a sudden I'd be like, well, never mind, the board said no to the job description in the first place. So this particular job is a considerable role. And it's being operated under, honestly, a, a lot of just willingness to take on more. And, and for this particular type of role, we need to acknowledge that this is a bit more than just our standard tech work. But I can't do the posting until I have a job description. And the job description didn't exist before. Well, it still doesn't exist until we vote. So I need first, a second, a vote, however it goes.
Do we have a motion? Ms. Holman, you have a motion to approve the job description. Do you have a second? Ms. Wilson, any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven oh.
Shannon, you wanna talk us through summer school?
Yeah, it is that time of year. This is not money at the moment, simply because I don't have those results. Normally, when this is brought to you, it is just high school, which is what you will see in front of you. It has not changed at all from plans that have come your way in the past. What is changing is that I read in second grade and third grade is now mandatory. And the reason you don't have numbers is because we are just now taking it. LES and Mount Carmel took it last week. Those results were posted Saturday, so we do have those results. However, those students will be given the opportunity to take the test again at the end of the year. And the state has granted us a third opportunity as well, which will come at the end of the summer session. The state has said we have to have fifteen kids to make it a class. So I just simply can't give that to you yet because I don't know those results. But I do need to put it up in front of you as an option. I just can't share with you what that's gonna look like yet. Today, word came out. I have not seen this yet. Our reading, we have a grant for science of reading. And she shared with my team today that there's an individualized reading plan for our second graders regarding remediation and retaking the test and what that's gonna look like as well. So we're gonna open it up to second grade for summer school too.
I know I asked you the other day about transportation. So that will be provided?
Correct, at the moment.
Okay.
Unless something drastic happens with funding.
Yeah, well, I mean, if the kid's second and third graders, so.
We're gonna have to do something, yes, if they won't come. And the, and the penalty for not coming to summer school in the third grade is retention.
Oh, interesting.
It's not that for second grade yet, but if they're at risk, we have to prove what we're doing to get them off the at-risk label.
Shannon, that consequence comes from the state. That's not a local
Correct.
decision, that's from the state level.
Correct.
Shannon, you said fifteen to make a class?
Fifteen in order to get the funding.
Okay, to get the funding. I thought, because I was thinking there's not gonna, there may not be that many at each school.
Well, we may be bringing them together. That's what I just can't.
Okay.
That's why you don't have a proposal.
Okay.
The high school will be located at the high school, but until I get numbers back, I don't know whether we'll be busing three Mount Carmel students in to BEES, the Laurel students in. I don't, I don't know what that looks like yet.
Okay.
And I also have to talk to my third-grade teachers and special education teachers for coverage as well. And until I know numbers, I can't do that yet.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is public transportation able to help with that at all? Or is it primarily going to have to be?
I think it's primarily gonna have to be us. Public transportation has helped us a couple of times this year, but they're just bogged down with other, other things.
They consolidated with Rush, or One County around, so they're, they're really busy.
That's gonna be a tough deal because second or third graders, parents are working. I mean, and you're talking, they're gonna be retained. That's, yeah, we need.
Our goal, and I may be looking lofty, but our goal is that we have two more opportunities to pass the test. We are, we started remediation at Mount Carmel and Laurel today, and we got the results back. Beth and I discussed it on Sunday. So we just got the results back, and we've already started the remediation for those students.
For how long?
Till the end of the year.
I didn't know if we could, if the corporation could buy transportation.
Oh, I, I don't.
I mean, I don't know. If those kids, if those kids didn't have a way in, you're second and third graders. And if, from a federal standpoint, if they're, we're not getting the money, is there anything we could do? I mean, that's a pretty big responsibility.
She said ten days they would come in.
Okay, ten days.
Seventeen days for high school and ten days for
So that makes
is what's required.
So I'm just saying.
So I, I think what Shannon was mentioning, that, that we, our goal is to get them in. Our, our goal is to do everything we can. Everything we can looks like finding a way, to find a way.
Yeah.
So that we can make this stuff happen. Now, that's not the assurance that we can give you because all the numbers matter, right?
Sure, yeah, I understand that.
But we are fighting for the same thing you're referring to, which is we want our kids to have as many chances as they can because retention is not a viable option. But we also know that we face legislation that we're, we're climbing that hill.
And, and I can give an example. We had a student last year when this litigation came through, we had a student at Laurel that was gonna pass. And I had to, at that time, I still had the freedom to make the opportunity for her to go. And we did all of the remediation, and she passed astronomically as a fourth grader. I mean, we're, I've said it over and over, you've all heard me, we're not, it's not popcorn, we all pop at different rates. So I think we just need to provide these babies with the opportunities to be successful. And hopefully, through remediation we're putting in place for the end of the year, we'll cut this number in half. And then the ten days in summer school will look a little different.
But they have to take I Lerno in the fourth grade, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Third grade takes it, third, third takes I Lern as well.
Okay.
The third up.
All right.
So we still need that motion.
So moved.
Ms. Foster makes a motion, second. Ms. Wilson, no other discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven oh.
Walk them up.
Franklin County Middle School Handbook changes.
Ms. Lee, you wanna talk us through that? Okay? Obviously, unlike your superintendent, keep it brief.
All right, I hope you have the proposed amendments to our agenda handbook in front of you. But basically rationale between Language Arts, Honors classes, and Math, Honors classes. Different can be good, although some of the parameters in Honors Math, what we're seeing at the sixth-grade level, the sixth graders coming in and not being able to handle the expectations right off the bat. And, and that's not a bad thing, that's a good thing. But to kind of minimize that potential is on Honors Math VII, and that's for incoming sixth graders. There's originally four criteria. And to get placed in Honors VII as a sixth grader, you only had meet one criteria to be placed there. And our recommendation to the board is having two of the four criteria to be placed in there. Now, later on, I'll talk about what happens if and when the criteria that we have isn't met. But my, my point is to be placed in seventh grade honors as an incoming sixth grader to seventh grader is to having the rationale is meeting two instead of one of the four criteria. And the four criteria are NWEA math score two thirty, an A or A-plus in math for all grading periods, Orleans Hannah score seventy-eight, and COGAP score of eight or nine. So that's my first proposal. Do I need to go through everything?
I think so. Yes, I would, I think it would be best.
Okay, additional criteria at the bottom, similar to Language Arts, but this is for math. Students must achieve at least one of the above criteria, which is criteria for Honors Math VII and Honors Algebra I, and earn a grade point average of three point oh. Now, the grade point average of three point oh wasn't in the current agenda book. And once placed in Math Honors VII class, students must maintain a B minus in the class each quarter. Students who fall short of the B minus for a quarter will be placed on probation because we're big on giving second chances. And then students who earn grades below B minus for two consecutive grades will be removed from the Honors Math class and placed in regular grade-level math class. And that kind of limits those who fall behind, but gives them a second chance. But you have to earn that second chance. And then there is an appeal criteria we like to add. Excuse me, if space is available, must have a written teacher recommendation, NWEA score two twenty-five on winter and spring assessment, and Orleans Hannah of seventy-five or higher. An additional criteria, students must achieve at least one of the above criteria and earn a grade point average of three point oh in math for the year. Excuse me. Students who enter the Honors Math program through the appeals process are admitted on a probationary status. Students on probation must maintain a B minus in the class for the first two quarters to continue in the class. Basically, that verbiage is similar to Language Arts, Honors, but it wasn't there beforehand. So we're recommending that that verbiage be placed in the agenda handbook for next year, next school year. Any questions?
So unless the board feels otherwise, that would come as a package where we could talk about first, second, and, and go from there. If you want to select anything out, that would be a different move. But I would recommend that we start forward with a package as listed from Mr. Liggett, and then we'll go from there. So, back to Ms. Irvin.
Do we have a motion?
How many do we have now? How many this year? If you don't know, that's okay.
I, I don't know.
That's okay.
I'm sorry.
It's fine.
Any else have a motion?
So moved. Sorry, Katie. No, you're good.
Ms. Foster, second by Ms. Holman.
You guys are racist.
You're good.
To approve the changes to the middle school handbook. No other discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven oh. Thank you.
Ms. Lee, and go home. It's a long day, man.
Next is mowing recommendation for Laurel Elementary.
Yep, so our, the bid that won previously is unable to perform the duties, and therefore I bring forward a second bid. Only, the only change would be to Laurel, and I have affirmed that this, they are still interested and available to do so. So I recommend that we accept the, the new Laurel bid as listed.
And that is for?
Bidding, mowing. You have to call for a verse.
Yeah. You're asking to approve a bidding process or the next bid? That's what I was asking.
The refreshed bid.
And that's for Hammond, is what I was asking.
Yep, so, so the new bid is listed in your packet.
Right. Okay, sorry, I just wanted to make sure what we were.
No problem.
Is there a motion? Mr. Burrus, is there a second? Ms. Foster, any discussion?
I'll clarify one thing, just because I think I'm not seeing it listed here. The company listed is quality?
That's what I was asking, yes.
Okay, quality lawn maintenance?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's in, it should be in the chart.
It's in the chart, yes, it's just not on the
I got you.
Reference.
Understood.
Yep.
No other discussion? All those in favor, right hand. Seven oh. Next is revision of the one of, or ten of three waiver board resolution.
So to be clear and fast, this is absolutely no change from the original except for additional language. I had some wonderful coaching from someone at the IDEE around how to make it more likely that our resolution or our waiver will pass. And so I went back in and I added a substantial amount of detail around that. And so that has been listed, given to that person, given the coaching. They feel really good about it. Part of that is making sure I bring all that language back to you. The request is the same, it's just more language inside of it around what are we looking to achieve, which goes right back to the things that we've talked about. No substantial changes here, but it does require a resolution.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Simonsen, motion to approve waiver board resolution. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Brennan, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven oh. You wanna do the master facility presentation again?
I'm sure everyone in the audience would really like that.
His other.
Yeah, so just a couple of things here. First is Laurel Low League is asking permission to use the ball field behind Laurel Elementary School for the twenty-five ball season. The season runs from April to the end of June. So superintendent moves that we accept that recommendation as listed.
In the past, they've, since they got to use it, they've done some painting and upgrades. Did they say anything about that this year or anything? I think they painted last year, so.
I think Shannon has some information.
It's all been done.
Okay.
So they put up the fencing, they, they rolled it down, and they'll put it back up.
Okay.
It's the plastic mesh.
Yeah.
And then they painted last year.
Yes, I thought so.
With the new, last year, the dumpster cover was provided, the Laurel community provided that, so they dump and take care of the trash as well.
Okay, thank you.
What about insurance?
They had, they established that through us before my time here, but I do know that I asked that question previously, and it had been done.
Okay.
But I'd have to double check.
Carrie messaged me earlier prior to the board meeting. She wrote the letter for the Laurel Little League, and she said that if anyone had any questions, they were more than welcome to get a hold of her, but she was very thankful for allowing us to allow, or them to use it in years past. And she wanted me to make sure I said thank you to her.
And, and please tell them that we appreciate the fact that they kept upkeep and all that.
She did message me to Beth, or whoever had asked, and she said we maintain our own insurance.
Yes.
It's in the letter, yeah.
Okay.
It says insurance will be obtained prior to first practice, but, I mean, all good questions, but this is pretty well. The way it goes every year, we let them use it.
First second vote?
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to allow the Laurel Little League to use the baseball field.
Ms. Brennan, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Wilson, any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven oh. TIF update. Ms. Duffy.
You're on the agenda, Ms. Duffy.
Sarah Duffy, I'm your representative on the Franklin County Redevelopment Commission, and I was asked to give you the pros and cons of a proposed contract about TIF with the Franklin County Redevelopment Commission. And some background, because it's been a while. In November, the county commissioners approved a new residential TIF district. At that time, the commissioners told Bill Shermer to negotiate in good faith a tax revenue sharing agreement with the school board within a hundred and eighty days. We were hopeful for an agreement on revenue sharing. We weren't asking for more than the Indiana Code, but we didn't want nothing at all. We wanted a limit, TIF, because you know, those can last really forever. So last month, the Redevelopment Commission's attorney drafted a seven-page formal contract, all kinds of contract language. Superintendent Gearing and I addressed the Redevelopment Commission and asked for some more favorable language. They voted to go forward with the contract to you without making any changes. The draft contract is already gone to the county commissioners, but the county commissioners, they really didn't comment. It was just, they had just seen it, they had no reaction. So there are some reasons you may want to sign this contract. First of all, it is a show of cooperation, it's a show of gratitude. They have shared fifteen percent in the past. They bought us digital microscopes one year, they put money into the marketing campaign, they put money into the digital campaign. This year, the school could get up to eleven thousand five hundred sixty-four dollars. That was last year's money, could be awarded as a grant this year. Some of the cons against signing this contract, it's basically nothing more than the Indiana Code. The Indiana Code says in about a paragraph, they say in seven pages. The contract lasted long as TIF, which is forever. The wording may actually be less favorable, and I bolded something for you there. It says, "The commission must take into account all other obligations and pledges before awarding the grant to the school corporation." Superintendent and I wanted to keep the school corporation in the running, not at the end of the line, not begging every year for grant money. We wanted to change that word before awarding the grant, to say along with awarding grant, but they rejected wording change. So my concern is that future school boards may have less recourse to push, as we pushed in the past, for that grant money, because the school board has signed a contract that says the up to fifteen percent, which you know can mean nothing. So it could be a good thing, it's a show of cooperation, show of good faith. It could be not beneficial at all, it's just the Indiana Code. So a couple of options you may want to think about as a school board, and you don't have to decide tonight, is just keep the door open to that negotiate in good faith, and maybe give a counterproposal of a flat percentage, maybe something at least ten percent, but up to fifteen percent. Or your other option is to accept, you know, maybe it's your next meeting, you can decide you want to just accept the contract as it is, but in writing the Indiana Code. One last thing I want to remind you, because I know you don't think TIF day and night, you don't eat and breathe TIF, but if there was no residential TIF, the school corporation would be getting roughly sixty-five percent of the property taxes from any new homes, sixty-five percent. So once there's a TIF, the most we can get is the up to fifteen. So a lot of the school property tax money in the future, these new homes, is gonna go for economic development. It's not gonna go for your schools and your schoolchildren. Over four times more money would come to the school board if there wasn't a residential TIF. But that's a done deal. The commissioners already said, we're having a residential TIF, but they said negotiate in good faith. So why don't you think about that, and maybe next month, you'll decide what you want to do.
Thanks, Sarah.
This was information only, and I didn't want to interrupt her, but that's the paper that she passed out. Everybody should have one, if you don't, let's hear it. Superintendent's report.
Just a couple of very brief things. First off, we want to say congratulations to all of our winter athletes. Of course, we had representation at the state level as well. That was very exciting, and kudos to our community for coming out and supporting our wrestlers there. That was, that was great. Secondly, just want to acknowledge and thank the Redevelopment Commission for their contribution to the portrait of a learner process. They've been a good partner to us. They've been very good in saying yes to a lot of the ideas coming forward. This conversation does not represent our, our relationship. Our relationship is strong. We are, we are connected and doing well. The question is around the contract, about what do we want to sign into future. They are doing a really great job of supporting us. Obviously, tonight was a lot of emotion, and maybe the most necessary conversation we've ever had. You know, as a whole, as a whole, this may have been the most necessary conversation we've ever had. We cannot be afraid to have tough conversations, because we are in tough situations. And I think part of the issue, along, for a long time, having watched many of the previous board meetings before I even applied for the job, was we tried to be often very nicely nice about everything, and almost like not afraid to disagree. We cannot be afraid to disagree across this, this board. That is okay. That does not create division. It, it creates conversation. And I'm very thankful for everyone who is willing to contribute to today's conversation, and, and even to Kevin, allowing the conversation to land the way it was. That's very different than our policy states, as you can kind of guess, but to allow that probably was one of the most necessary conversations we've ever had. I'm thankful for that. And so I don't prolong this meeting any longer. That'll be all for tonight. I'll turn back over to Kevin.
Legislative updates. We discussed the Senate Bill one. As I somewhat stated earlier, Mr. Gearing and I, and Ms. New, sorry, I almost forgot you, we did sit down with one of our legislators last week just to have a introductory discussion and discuss some things. Right now, the state is pretty much at halftime. Everything is switching sides, all the bills. As far as the Senate Bill one, there was a House bill to go along with it. That's the bill dealing with property tax caps, but the House bill will most likely be not dropped, but merged with the Senate bill. How much more they get that, or if it passes, again, is yet to be determined. But also, as Mr. Gearing said, if that encourages anybody to reach out to your legislator and get in their ear, by all means. But that's it for now. Like I said, they're halftime, so we'll move on to, or is anybody else have any things, questions on legislative?
I'll, I'll just add that we went to the Indiana State House Day, learned a lot that I otherwise was not aware of.
I forgot we did.
Was all made, yeah. So we, we went up there. It's been a few weeks, I don't blame you, but that was a great day, just really talking with lots of other people in a similar spot to us across the state. We're not alone, hearing them yell and scream about bills and at a panel of, I guess, representatives, senators.
Legislature.
Yeah, that we're all there, so. That is all.
Thank you. Future agenda requests. There are none. Any recognition or acknowledgements? With that, we will move to adjourn, and.
Happy birthday, Ms. Wilson.
Oh, happy birthday to Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
I'm not singing, but.
We do have.